Five o'clock, we'll call our meeting to order and the first item is the approval of the agenda and we have two agenda additions. I guess Commissioner Gross would like to add discussion regarding the buffer issues and then we also have a request to approve a 3.2 malt liquor license to the city of Barnesville for Willow Creek Golf Course.
Who to approve with the additions?
Okay, we have a motion in a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same sign, motion carried and we are going to, right now, we're going to take that agenda addition on the malt liquor license.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda addition.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so that permit was granted as of five o'clock.
That's good, thank you.
All right, do we have any citizens to be heard today? No citizens to be heard, all right. Approval of bills and vouchers.
Second.
You have a motion? Second?
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same sign? Motion carried, approval of the minutes from May 23rd.
I'll have to approve.
Second?
We have a motion in the second. Discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same? Motion carried. All right, our 5:05 item is request to hire a position outside of step one through three on the county salary grid and this is Director Steven Larson with Central Regional Juvenile Center.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Steven.
Thank you guys, as you remember a couple of weeks back, you approved us as to hire a position in the secure unit and what I'm here today is to request Mike McMullen, I've been an employee of Clay County for just about 12 years, has been a part of the reentry services position that unfortunately it appears is going away and we made a conditional offer, job offer to him, but would be requesting that he start at step, grade 16, step six, which would be 2570 per hour. I think with Mike comes with a great deal of experience, a lot of contacts here at the county and so we wouldn't be requesting this in most circumstances, but I think this is a special one that would certainly warrant that.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion in the second, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same?
All right.
All right, it's done, Steven. So we're, are we coordinating, we have a meeting next week, correct?
Yeah, noon on Tuesday.
Okay. And I saw your, an email tell you where you're doing some prep on your 2018 budget?
Correct, yeah.
Very good, thank you Steven.
Yep.
Okay, all right, next we have Mark Sloan, Mark's here, Director of Information Services and he's going to give us an update on the rural addressing system. Good afternoon, Mark.
Good afternoon. Now when I was here talking about my department and all the things we do, it dawned on me that we have some pretty major programs that we just mentioned that we do them, but I thought maybe it's time to come back and talk to you about what they are. I've not talked to the board about rural addressing since 2008 was the last time I was here, so, and before that it was quite a few years, so I thought it was time to bring you all up to speed on what's going on. Brief history with rural addressing, we started 20 years ago when we still had rural box numbers for our addresses, the issue was specifically related to emergency response, how do we get our emergency responders to where they need to go? We started a lengthy process of determining what the address system should look like, we had members of our law enforcement community and our, you know, a whole bunch of different folks got together and we came up with a program and started working hard to implement it. Interesting side note of that is when we came time to implement that, we came up with our addresses, we had to apply those to the rural routes and the person we worked with to make that happen is Frank, right here. So we worked with him back in 1998 and 99 when we started rolling it out, that was a, it was a, it was a big thing. At that time, our emergency responders were quite adamant about making sure that the way we addressed our syst, our system was something that was really logical and easy to understand. We use streets and avenues here in Clay County, our streets run north and south, our avenues run east and west. We basically took the Morehead Addressing System and exploded it across the county. The exception to that, what we did is we went to 10 blocks per mile and that gives us the capability of making it easier to locate an address. Our addresses are designed, so as we give out an address, it's tied to where the access to the property is and that, and we actually measure a distance down the road from the nearest corner and we have a grid, we put it on, we figure out exactly where that is. The reason for that is we actually teach our deputies and our emergency responders how they can get to an intersection, they can actually reset the odometer and drive down to it and come within 50 feet to where the driveway should be. We designed that on purpose so that they can find them and, because it seems like they're always trying to find these places when it's blizzarding, it's night, they can't, hardly see the road, they need to be able to find it. So we use streets and avenues, we have very few named streets, we try very hard not to allow named streets even to this day. We have just a handful of them, but we try to make those names location specific. I had a handout here that taught, on one side has a map of the county and some of the streets on it and on the back it has a description of how the address system works. That actually is the same thing on our county highway maps that we give out, it's on the same back of those. The first thing it talks about on there is that we use, here in Clay County, we use the, something called the NINA Addressing Standard, which is something that's used statewide and that's a book that looks just like this and that tells us how we name streets and then how we put addresses on them. Here at Clay County, to make our system work even better, we developed something called the Clay County Property Address Standard, it looks, it's just like this, you can actually download it from our website. It was adopted by the board here in October 1998 and this is what really lays the groundwork for everything we do and we use this document surprisingly often. We had an issue just this morning where we pull it out and try to figure out, okay, how do we address that, how specific to some of the more complex issues. So I mentioned before, when we address a property, we base it by where the location of the access is, the rule of thumb is if there's more than one address within a property, which is relatively common in the rural areas, we'll have multiple houses or a business or something like that, the way the addresses are, are based is the smallest number should be closest to the road and as you drive into the yard, the bigger numbers will move toward the back, as, as much as we can do that. We try to make that happen. What happens sometimes is they'll, they'll move around or something, they'll bring in a trailer and mess that up, but in all efforts, that's what we try to do. So when we developed the address system, we came up with a plan, how we're going to implement it and what we, we kind of did it in phases, we started with, with residences and then we addressed everything else over the next several years. When we first started, our, our emergency responders were adamant that we have proper signage, so they can find where they're going. And our signage program consists of two pieces for the addressing, one are called intersection signs, which are the big green ones like that, we actually have a set right there. That's a standard set, right, that size, that we go up, yeah, like that. We made the choice back when we first installed them, that we would go with something called a Tell Smart Post, which is that post you see that's square with the holes in it, instead of some other way, if you look in cities, they'll tend to do it a little differently, but that, what happens then is they have to put a thing on the top of the post, a blade holder and that, those things cost some money and then when we're start talking, the numbers we were doing, it becomes quite expensive. With the Tell Smart Posts, we don't have to have a blade holder, we just bolt the signs right to the post. We have 1,600 of those locations in the county, so at 1,600 of them times four signs per post, it becomes quite a bit of money. This year, our, they were, we started installing them, we did it in a phased program because we spread the cost out over several years. We started installing them in year 2000, those signs are the ones they're starting to replace this year, if you remember, the highway guys were here, the sign department is starting to replace them, we're doing about a third of them this year. So over the next three years, they'll slowly replace those signs, so those signs are anywhere from 15 to 17 years old. They're mounted on a 12-foot tall post, so if you ever see them out there inside the road, they're, that post is 12 feet up in the air. One of the things we do to help our emergency responders is those signs are always located in the same quadrant of the intersection, depending on whether you're north or south of Highway 10. You know, everything north of Highway 10 is a north address, everything south, that's a south address. If you're north of it, that sign is going to be in the southwest quadrant at the intersection if possible, it's, there's certain places it can't be there because of how the roads are configured, but normally it's in the same corner and that is done so, when you're driving along in a fire truck or ambulance or wherever, you can just keep looking to the same place to see the sign and then you can count your way up to it. So we've got, those are all, and on the south side, they'll be on the, on the northwest quadrant of the intersection. Reason we did that specifically was so that the signs would remain within our county. On the borders of our county, our addressing system is different than our neighboring counties are, of course, because in Minnesota, we did it by county. We actually have an intersection out way on the east end of our county where we meet Pottertail and Becker Counties, we actually, you'll see three of these signs in the same corner. And it depends on which side you're on, in the west side of the road, it's 300th Street, which is ours, and on the east side, it's 160th Avenue from Becker County or, but that's we, that's just one of the things we have to deal with. The next piece we added when it comes to signage is what's called the address number sign, those blue, blue signs. Those came from, originally, some of the fire departments had put up things called fire number signs, they had their own individual fire numbers.
Yeah.
Yep. And the fire departments really liked those signs because it helped them find the things, so they were really wanting that and a lot of our other neighbors had done the same idea, so we, we decided to go with an addressing number sign. We initially gave them to just the residences and now over the years, we've given them out to everything else that needs, that's significant, that needs assigned. We've got about 6,500 of those in place. We issued them free of charge specifically because they are, they're specifically for our emergency responders, that's the reason those signs are out there. We have people all, will ask questions about, well, how do I get my mail and all that kind of stuff and the rural addressing doesn't really have anything to do with mail delivery, it has to do with emergency response.
So that's not a mailing address?
It can be the mailing address, in most places it is.
Yeah, that's what I thought it was, yeah.
But the sign may not be where the mailbox is and it may be where the mailbox is and if, and if you have a mailbox, it doesn't matter whether or not you have a sign that you get mail. That's, on that side of the conversation, we issue the addresses, which is the street and house, address number and street and things like that, the city, state and zip, state is pretty set, but the city and zip are issued by the post office and that has to do with the rural route, the carrier routes that are out there. We'll actually have some places where carrier routes actually cross each other. So when it comes to emergency response, the city and zip code don't, aren't used, it's just the address numbers that we use. But those blue signs are really valuable for our emergency responders, they like them a lot. One of the things we do for ours that are differently than, next thing you're out there, you look, you go to Becker or Wilken County, they don't have the white outline around the sign, ours does, and that way our deputies can tell if they've driven too far, all of a sudden they'll, like Turtle Lake's a really good example, when they, because Turtle Lake Road was all the way around the lake, but only part of it's in Clay County.
Right, right.
So they'll be driving along, all of a sudden they'll see the, the white circles go disappear off the signs and go, oh, I drove into the wrong county, then they can turn back and, because Becker and Pottertail and all of them use the same sign, it just doesn't have the white border, we add those to it. When we install these signs, we, initially, when we did the program, we had the fire departments install them, because we had several thousand of them to put up and we didn't have the financial resources to do it and the fire departments really wanted them, so we bought the signs, issued them to the fire departments and they went through a big project to install them and that went pretty well.
Or they gave them up to homeowners, too?
Yes, yep, whatever they could do to get them up. What we found after several years was that wasn't working very well, we would buy signs, we only buy the signs maybe once or twice a year, because what we find is we have to have a big enough chunk to buy to get a decent price. So we'll buy the signs and then we would issue them to the fire departments and sometimes, you know, they're volunteers, so sometimes they wouldn't get installed for several months and we were having some concerns with that and we were looking at how many of the numbers we were doing and we decided in 2008, I came back here and we talked about it and we decided that we'd have our sign department install the signs. We're only talking on an average year, anywhere from 60 to 80 signs is what we're putting up, house number signs. So our sign department does that. We have money budgeted and set aside to purchase and install the signs, I think it's about $3,000 a year.
Is that in your budget or is that in Dave's?
It's in the sign department, it's actually in the Dave's. It was in mine for many years and we finally moved it there, because it kind of made more sense, because the sign guys are doing all that work. So they have some money for the maintenance of those, of the blue signs and straightening the green ones and it's when they have to buy new ones, that's when they had to look for different funding, but, so yeah, so now what will happen is every couple of times a year, we'll get ready, we'll order the signs, we get them ordered and then our sign guys will install them when they can and they do a really phenomenally good job about that.
Mark, are, Mark, are some of those 60 dated that we do a year, are, some of those are new, newly construction, is that why?
Most of them are new.
New?
And there's a handful that get knocked over or damaged or, you know, I've, I've had that before, I had somebody call me and says, can I, I drove over my sign, can I get a new one? I said, yeah, and they say, can I get it before my husband gets home? And I said, no, sorry, you know, that kind of thing will happen, but, and we've had, we've had some of our mowers get a little enthusiastic and take out a few or snowplows and, yeah, it's, it's, it depends on how much development we have, but all in new properties we'll get them.
Mostly new development, yeah.
Yep, and new things also, it's not just residences, there'll be things like substations or lift stations or towers or whatever it might happen to be.
If there's damage by private people, private or citizens, whatever, do we charge for them or we just?
No, we put them up.
Okay.
Our concern was with that was if, because some counties will charge for them, our concern was that is they wouldn't always want to pay for it and our, it's our emergency responders that want the sign there. So the, our position has been, up to now at least, is that it was something we thought was important to have in place, so that our emergency responders could find those locations. If you see more than one address inside of a, of a yard, that's when you'll see the multiple numbers on the same post. I mean, it could be three, four, we've got, at least there's like six, depending what's in that yard. The sign, the, the address signs are always along, along the road, so they can be seen no matter how long that driveway is, could be a long way back there, but we'll have those signs in that place. We, we keep track of all of this stuff in our geographic information system, we have all of it in there, so we know exactly what we've got when it comes, both types of signs and all of the address points. One of the big issues that we're talking about now is, we have, how we actually deliver that information is going to start changing. We, when, right now, when an emergency call comes in, like you're out there on your, you're at your house and you call your phone, if you're calling from a landline phone, that 911 information comes in to the call center and that's tied to your phone number. What's happening over time is we're getting about 80% of our emergency calls are coming in through cell phones and cell phones are a little more vague, they know pretty much where the phone is, but when a landline call comes in, it says, here's the phone call, it's coming from this property and these are the emergency responders you need to send. With a cellphone, they have to go another step and figure out where is that call and who do I need to send for emergency response? In Minnesota, we're going through something now called Next Generation 911, which is a, it's a really big step technologically. What will happen with that is we'll actually have the call coming in, instead of the information coming through the phone company like it does now, it'll actually come in through our mapping systems and then it places the call on the map and once the call's on the map, it feeds the dispatcher, the emergency responder information, police, fire, ambulance, all those kind of things. The purpose behind that is because of the cell phones and we want to be able to get that information as fast as we can to those people. To make that function, we have to have a robust geographic information system to put the data in place for that and Minnesota's been working on a solution for that called the Minnesota Next Generation 911 standards, those are in, they're final stages, they'll be coming out soon. We're in really good position in that our GIS is advanced as it is, many counties will have to do quite a bit of work and quite a bit of expense to get their systems up and functioning for this. For us, we're ready, we've already done all this stuff, we've been doing it for many years actually. So we'll have to do some, some work to make our data match up exactly how it's supposed to, but we will be in really good position for that. The one challenging part for us is our regional dispatch center is in Fargo and they serve both counties, Cass and Clay, so they, they have North Dakota standards that aren't quite the same as our standards, so sometime this, this later this summer, we'll work through that difference with our friends in Fargo and Cass County and make it so that our data works well with theirs. We've had a really good relationship with them in the past and we'll continue that. So we should be in good shape for Next Gen 911 when it comes up, it's going to be a bunch of work for us, but it does, shouldn't be anything extra, we don't, we're not looking for anything outside of what we normally would be doing, we're just going to be tidying up some stuff. So overall, our addressing system is working well, our emergency responders like it, they, it makes a lot of sense to them. One thing I wanted to mention that comes up once in a while is in our, when I mentioned we have streets and avenues, nowhere in our addressing system do we use county road numbers. Those are used, not, they're not used by addresses, they're, they're not used for emergency response, they're just used strictly for highway department stuff.
Okay.
So.
Because they also have a street number.
Yeah, and, yeah, and that's why actually we've asked them, remind them once in a while, our highway department will say, hey, we're doing work on County Road 6 and we'll say, what street is that we're having it? People will need to know that. And actually, we work with our emergency responders so that they, some of the older ones would still say, you know, I'm on Highway 26, well, yeah, but really that's 160th Avenue North is what they need to say, because that's how the dispatchers are going to see it, they don't, they don't see the county numbers, they still see them, and that's why we have the green signs all on there. And those green signs should be every mile, every mile post, or every mile mark, there should be another set of them. And if they get damaged, they let us know and we fix them and our deputies are really good at notifying us if either type of sign is damaged or missing.
You're talking about the mile macro signs?
No, we're talking about these ones right here, those street, street intersection signs we.
Oh, yeah, oh yeah, because, yeah, the rural areas are.
Yep, out in the rural areas, there should be one every mile.
Yeah. That's where the intersections are.
Yep. In Clay County, we have, my official, one of my official roles is the E911 Addressing Coordinator, so I make sure that all the E911 addresses throughout the county match what, what they're supposed to. We don't have any authority over addressing inside the, the cities, however, most of them will come to us and ask for our help whenever they have something they would like to. Glendon's got a brand new subdivision going again, but they'll reach out to us and say, can you help us with the addressing on this, to make sure it makes sense and when that plat was going through the process, it comes to us for review to make sure the street names make sense. So our city has been really good about making sure that everything they're doing is working as well as it can and we help them as much as we can. It's because our whole goal is to make sure that when a call comes in, it goes, the people that have to respond can find it, that's, that's what we're all about. So that was addressing in a few short minutes. I have lots of, lots, I could talk for hours about this. I, I probably spent a quarter of my time on this, believe it or not, it's a, it's a big topic, it's, you'd be surprised how much is happening today out there. Today's topic was Morehead Airport, Morehead Airport is inside the city of Morehead, however, there's a, they don't have Morehead rural routes out there, it's Glendon rural routes, so their addresses are in Glendon and that's something they really don't like so much, so they're looking at trying to figure out how to make those Morehead routes or Morehead addresses. That's an issue that's been going on for 20 years. So that's, there's always something new.
All right.
Just a comment, do, Morehead, does the Morehead address system go, are there properties south of Comstock that have Morehead addresses?
Absolutely.
So it really does?
Yes, it has to do with the post office, what rural routes go in and actually, the city of Comstock, when we did addressing, rural addressing, the city of Comstock opted to not do addressing within their city of their own, they are addressed off of our grid, so Main Street in Comstock, I think it's 160th Avenue, but they're all Morehead addresses, because Comstock doesn't have any rural routes.
And that just surprised me, because those, a lot of those properties are close to the Sabin Post Office or Barnesville Post Office, the Morehead Post Office.
Yeah, it's, it's interesting, especially where it gets really confusing, in the eastern end of the county where we have Lake Park, we have some Lake Park addresses in there and we've got Holly and Barnesville and it's almost like there's a competition when a new house will come in, which rural carrier can best serve it and, I don't actually know how that piece works, but sometimes we'll get it, we'll guess based on their neighbors what it should be and then sometimes we'll get it right, most of the time we get it right, but sometimes they'll tell us, no, Holly's going to take care of that one.
Right.
And that's between them and their postmasters.
And, and I can agree with what you said, not using county roads, because we have a tendency to change the name of a county road. Like 95 would just change to different, that way, if you use county road as an address, people would have to change their mailing address every time a county road is.
Yeah, exactly, and the county roads are, numbers are kind of tied to funding sources, you know, that kind of thing.
Yes.
And they aren't, they don't go straight, sometimes they'll turn and go different directions, so that's, when we looked at addressing, we weren't able to use those, so we had, they, I mentioned earlier, we have some named streets, one of the things I forgot to mention when it comes to named streets is our state highways are typically, are officially a named street, you know, Highway 75, Highway 32, those are, that's their, their street name, but there's, we use a first date on these one, because they're not going to change those.
Very good.
Anything else?
Thank you.
I brought show and tell?
Excellent, very nice. So what's the, the reflectability of life on the house number signs, are they, is that similar to the street signs then or?
No, actually, it's not as good.
It's not as good?
We, we, they come in different grades and the big green street signs, we buy at the top grade, so they can be seen a long way away and the, the blue ones, we buy at like a lower grade, because they're quite a bit cheaper, but they don't have to meet the same standard, there's actual rules on how reflective, signs can be stop signs are the most, they have, the signs, the blue signs don't have to have any reflectivity at all to them, so I think probably at some point, we'll have to start looking at replacing a few of them, because they've, there's, some of them are fading out there, you know, there's some that haven't been installed since 2000, 2000, we should have put them up.
All right, thank you, Mark.
Sure.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to our next agenda addition item, that's the buffer discussion.
I guess the reason I.
These microphones are really, really sensitive.
Back fading here. I don't know, I guess the reason I wanted to brought up, because we have to make a decision by June 28th, you know, who's going to administer this buffer program to receive these funds, I mean, you don't have to make a decision, but then you don't get the funds, I think, or something. I feel that we should at least have a discussion of what we plan on doing, whether we want the county to administer this program, whether we want this water conservation district to administer this program or the watershed boards, you know, so I think, I think Buffalo has showed interest that they would administer it, soil and water conservation has shown interest, but Wild Rice, I think it's remained neutral, they wanted to see what was going to happen, so, there's a meeting tomorrow morning, I guess at the highway department, I guess they're discussing that, Wild Rice has a meeting tomorrow morning, I'm planning on attending that, but I need to know, do we have any preference what we want to do?
Well.
Should it be elected officials, should it be someone, should it be an organization, like the watershed boards or?
You know, I think, you know, I think the, you know, the fact that, that there's a lot of potential discussion and negotiation and potentially even litigation in some of these issues, that I would think maybe landowners, their preference would be that, that it would be somebody who would be held accountable, you know, that being an elected person, so I think that there's a lot of good argument to that. But ultimately, I think what's going to be the most important to the Clay County is that we're unified in what we do. So if it's going to be watershed, then both watersheds need to do it and, you know, we heard from Kevin from the Wild Rice that he didn't think their board was going to have interest, well, we're not going to be able to wait forever for that decision, I happen to think that the, the soil and water is probably a really good fit for, for something like that, I think, because they do cover our entire county, we wouldn't have to worry about one watershed wanting and one not wanting to do it, so to me, that would, it's becoming a more logical choice for me that.
I think since they do just cover Clay County, excuse me, sorry, since they do just cover Clay County, I mean, whereas the watershed, they go from Wilken, and Wilken could do one thing, Ottertail could do another thing, Becker could do another thing.
Right.
So I think that'd be tough for, the watersheds to take over, same thing with Wild Rice, goes into several different counties, you know, one county says, yes, we'll do it, and the other one says, no, so I think it'd be tough jurisdiction.
So we've got till the 28th?
So you've got till the Twenty-Eighth to apply for the money. Is there any guarantee we get money?
Well, it's in the legislation.
Yeah, we just, it has to be identified.
So as long as we apply, we do get funding for?
Yeah, I think the dollar amount is already.
Yeah, it's Hundred and Sixty Thousand.
It's already been determined.
For our share?
For, for Clay County.
Is that adequate to, to pay for what needs to be done?
I, I think under normal circumstances, it would. And that, that, that becomes the, you know, the big, big dollar question.
And so is it ongoing, that funding, or?
Next year, it's Two Hundred Thousand.
So it, so.
After that.
Yeah, maybe not.
After that, we don't know, but can we opt out then and kick it back to the state if they don't fund it?
But I, you know, typically, I think, once your, once your buffers are set up.
Yes.
You know, they're, they become permanent. You know, it's, it's, I, I would think it's almost like an easement or something that's, that to have, to become a permanent easement. So. I, isn't that, your take on that, Commissioner?
Yeah, you know, I guess I've, I've been in meetings with the Soil and Water and the watershed, and there's, you know, there's different schools of thoughts on that. Part of why I initially felt it was more beneficial to have the Buffalo, or the Buffalo Red Watershed do it is because they really are the ditch authority. And they've, they've put in a lot of these buffer strips already. And so that, they really have the ball moving because they've been proactive in that. I, I understand that it is important to have an elected body be accountable to do that. So I understand as well. But, you know, as, just as we are trying to have something that's the same and consistent for the entire county, I believe the watershed is hopeful that they don't have, and their enforcement piecemealed together either. And I think from an email that I read, that Wilken County was going to assume the enforcement of theirs. And like I said, they're waiting for us. And I think we're a third of, third of all the buffers that they're going to be putting in. So I think we're not going to have a consensus between the Wild Rice and the Buffalo Red. And it seems logical at this point to have Soil and Water.
When I, and I don't see any reason why, you know, if, if that, you know, if that, those duties went to Soil and Water, I don't know, I don't know why they couldn't incorporate some work by the watershed and, and, you know, maybe so some of the dollars that's involved could be, you know, it'd be like, maybe the Buffalo Red could be a subcontractor to Soil and Water for the areas that they, they deal with. So I think there could be some partnerships established that would work for that as well. You know, so I, you know, I, you know, I think if we haven't heard positively from the Wild Rice, and I, my, in my opinion, or my, my vote's going to be that go to the Soil and Water.
And I believe we have to identify by June Twentieth. Am I?
Twenty-Eighth.
Mr. Chair, it's the Twenty-Eighth by four-thirty in the afternoon.
Okay.
You do have a meeting on the Twenty-seventh, so that'll be the drop dead date for your, your folks, you folks.
Well.
Is there any reason to wait if we want to do it?
Well, I, I think we can certainly wait till.
I think important to wait until, because Frank will meet with the Wild Rice tomorrow, and I will meet with Buffalo Red and Soil and Water tomorrow.
And Commissioner Haney might want to have a say in the discussion too, so.
But, you know, same thing with the watershed boards. You say, well, they have already control of all the ditches and stuff there, but there's other waters and moles there too that the watershed board is not covering. So I think the Soil and Water is a good, a good fit to.
And I think that the people at Soil and Water are open to whatever direction we choose. And I think that everyone really works well together. And, and like I said, they, they had sent out letters to everyone as the LiDAR maps were being updated. So they have the, they know exactly where they are. They've got the maps and.
So just like, you know, the, when the Wild Rice members were here, you know, I raised the question, well, can they refuse to do it? And I, I guess their reply was, yes, they can. They, you know, so I'm assuming that Soil and Water would have that same ability.
Yes.
So maybe what we should be doing is reaching out to them right now with a communication, asking them, will, you know, that we, we're very interested in potentially having them take over that task. Will they be willing to do it?
Right.
Because they'd hate to see us go on the Twenty-seventh and do this, and then they turn around and reject it.
Yeah, that's not.
You know, that's not going to be good either.
Better do it soon.
Well, well, Mr. Chair, and, and that is exactly, I was going to interject. So I'm glad you, you picked up on that, because they haven't made a decision as to the, whether they want to go down that road and whether that would interfere with their other duties too. But there's one other element that you may want to discuss, and, and maybe not for very long. But, you know, if the county decides to do it, that could be a function within, if, if Soil and Water didn't want to do it. And I'm not suggesting this by any means, but you do have another, other departments that you could ask to take over that.
It'd be nice to, it'd be nice to, that's, can we reach out to Soil and Water?
Absolutely.
Do they, do they have an official meeting before?
They did last week, but they haven't, they'll be at that meeting tomorrow.
Okay, so Soil and Water will be there and?
I did have, Mr. Chair, I did have a conversation with Kevin today.
Okay.
Just about that very issue. I, I copied him on, on some information that was sent out, and then he contacted me, and then we had some dialogue. And, and he feels that there is some interest, but there's also that concern, even when, you know, we asked him to take over the weak control, they, they had discussion. Not that they, it's been worked out very well, but they don't want, he doesn't want to assume that they.
Well, can we, can we reach out to them even before next Tuesday and see if we can get something? Or if they want to, even if they would want to come in, and maybe you can reach out to them tomorrow. And, and even if they would want to come in as part of our next Tuesday's agenda and talk about it, we could certainly, we could certainly still allow that to, to happen.
Well, and that would, Mr. Chair, that'd be a public meeting too, so they could have a quorum at that if they wanted to bring in a quorum.
I mean, that's, that's totally, and maybe you can.
I think that's important because they won't, they won't have an opportunity for their board to meet before the deadline because they didn't meet a week ago.
So, so why don't we try to work on that, and maybe you can tomorrow even, you know, so I think we should just maybe put it as an agenda item, Commissioner Gross, if that's for next Tuesday. And, and we'll actually have a, a buffer discussion with Soil and Water. Why don't we do that? Okay, and then you can.
Good job.
Work on that tomorrow with them. Okay. Anything else, Frank, that you want to?
No, that's what I want to have done. Thank you.
All right, well, and then, you know, you'll, you'll get more insight tomorrow if you go up to the Wild Rice as well.
Well, I just wanted to know which way we were leaning, so have a discussion with them.
Okay, we'll move into committee reports. Commissioner Mojo, would you like to start today?
Sure. Last week, I attended a strategic planning day meetings with the Executive Committee and Board of Lakes and Prairies Community Action, just to, we are continuing to update bylaws. And, and felt that it was a good planning to talk about future programming needs and funding sources and staff needs. So it was a good day. I also had a chance to meet with Christine Holland, the Executive Director of River Keepers, a good dialogue as we do donate or contribute some to their budget. We had a conversation about, they have, they do some reforestation and planting of trees. And she had asked Commissioner Everett to still on their board and had said that we had some county-owned property that was purchased with bonding dollars. And because we can't sell it, was interested if, if we would be willing for them to do some reforestation, which is basically, they supply the trees and the volunteers plant them. So we can talk about that going forward. That would be.
Bonding, are you, are you talking FEMA?
Uh, is it the Crestwood Properties that were bought with bonding dollars, so we can't sell those properties going forward?
Oh, okay, yeah, there was.
State dollars.
State, state bonding dollars, yeah.
Sorry.
Okay, yeah, no, that's fine, no, that's.
About that. So, because they are willing to do that and thought it would be a benefit and also to benefit us for bank stabilization, really.
But they don't have the, the state bonding dollars don't have the restrictions that FEMA dollars have on it.
Some did. There were some.
But we still can't liquidate.
Yeah, well, and you're, and you're not going to want to put structures on there.
No, you can't, yeah, that's correct.
But trees might be appropriate.
Yeah.
All right.
Thank you. And then after that, I attended the Elder Abuse Summit for a while at the Yum Kum. So it was a very good presentation and dialogue. And I think Clay County was well represented with people that were in attendance. So great job to those that planned that. I also had a meeting last week with Megan Murdall, the steering, and part of the Steering Committee of the Cast Clay Food Systems Advisory. We've worked on, I believe, ten blueprints over the last ten years, or ten years, two years, for possible use for jurisdictions in adding ordinances in relation to how it affects urban agriculture. And we're kind of at a pivot point now, as we've discussed blueprints, and now moved to maybe an implementation stage. And so they wanted to get a, kind of a baseline where the county feels what could be applicable to the county. Clearly, things that are maybe applicable to the city of Morehead, not a hundred percent for Clay County. I did recommend that our planning and zoning be part of the dis, this discussion as to how we move forward. So we'll see how that, that goes. And then earlier this afternoon, we had a Felton Prairie meeting. As you recall, we've met a couple of times over the last year and a half or so to talk about selling the Felton Prairie to DNR and, and what a price may be. And they did come back with some appraisals. And like, we felt that the appraisal was, was better than one that was done earlier. And I think the majority of the board felt that it is a, moving forward, it may be good to continue discussion on that. We did decide on a counter offer, just to see if they were interested in that. But from my perspective, the county has a large amount of properties, and we, it's a pain for the highway department to maintain these. I kind of feel like they're a liability for us to have a bunch of them. And, and from my standpoint, the Felton Prairie, because of the fens that exist there and the last piece of Tall Grass Prairie and the Northern Prairie, I feel like it's maybe a, a time for Clay County to get rid of that asset. So. That concludes my reports.
Commissioner.
The only thing I had, I was gone last week, but I had a, a construction update meeting yesterday on the Jail and Law Enforcement Center and everything. It seems to be going well there. A couple-ish, a couple of issues, but overall, things are going pretty good. I think we did decide that the construction engineers and the architects are going to give an update to the county board quarterly. So first one, I think we planned for July, first part of July.
July thirteenth.
Around the, around the middle of July.
Eleven through thirteen.
Eleven, whatever that Tuesday is.
Yeah, second meeting in July anyway, I think it is. So that was it for me.
Commissioner Gross?
Hey, Tuesday at Highway Department meeting, we talked about the Glendon project, and if you drive, driven through Glendon, you know it's quite a bit of construction there, and it was highway camp. So that project's moving along good. Talked about the Holly Shop. We opened bits for that a couple of meetings ago. And we, I think they've run into a little bit of a problem there, where the top bidder may not, I don't know, may not be the, may be a problem there. So we're looking into that a little bit more, see what we can do there. Then we talked the Saban. Saban Mayor was here a couple of meetings ago too, and we discussed that some more about what we should do, whether we should put a pedestrian ramp in there, flashing light, you know, or, you know, and if we do put that stuff in, are we going to cost share that thing? So that was a discussion at the Highway Tracking. There Thursday, as Jenny said, at the Elder Abuse Meeting at the Yum Kum Center. You know, I attended that meeting, and it made me proud to be a commissioner of Clay County, because we were really well representative of Clay County people there. They were there. I mean, that showed our interest in this elder abuse issue. And it, it just made me proud that we had such a good, good staff there, looking to take that in, you know. And even one of the presenters, the first presenter was there, said that Clay County takes better care of their elders than other counties do. You know, we, we have county attorneys that represent them. Other counties don't do, provide that type of service. So many times, you know, you have county people, residents ask, well, you know, lower your taxes, you know, and we say, well, which services don't you want? You know, and, you know, I thought that'd be a good example there, you know. You want elder abuse. The county attorneys helped if they, they give the elder abuse. Do you want that taken away? You know, so it was just, it was a good meeting, and like I say, we had good representation from the county. And the meeting this afternoon, Jenny's already covered with the Felton Prairie. That was it.
All right, thank you. And I, I also had the Highway Tracking Committee meeting that Commissioner Gross talked about. And the, I, I do know that they are, they came with a, with a proposed solar option type of a deal with some flashing lights as a potential. And, and they, they did look at some anticipated costs to do that. And so I think where, where we left at is to go back to Saban and to see if, you know, they originally said that they'd be willing to cost share, so we're going to see how that.
Their meeting's next Monday.
Okay, so that's, that should be on there. That same day, we also had a, an insurance committee meeting, and, you know, we talked about moving forward with a, a survey that's going to be done. That's going to find out if there's interest in a single plus one or a single plus dependent. Huh?
Child or children.
Yeah, single plus dependent, single plus children. Yes. And then, and then we found out that we're going to be staying with the same dental for two thousand and eighteen. And one thing that was approved by the committee, but I haven't seen Darren, that it's come before us for final approval yet, and that was the request to add the Minnesota Deferred Compensation Plan. We, we didn't act on that as a board yet, have we? Okay, but you're going to be bringing that forward? Okay. Because the, the committee did vote to, to add that. Yeah, okay. So we'll look for that to come. All right. Then, ah, then I also, let's see, on Monday, yesterday, I had another morning meeting with the Subcommittee regarding plastic bags. It seems like it's taking over my life, these, these meetings regarding plastic bags, but. But it's, these, we have these interns working for us that are really, they're really interested in this project, and so we're, we're trying to help them out. And then we did have the jail construction meeting. And that, everything is going fairly well. There's, there are, we did learn of a couple of little hiccups that we'll, we're going to get some more information on, and we'll share that. But at this point, it's a little bit early. And that's all that I have. I did get a, I don't know if you all got this deal regarding a public input meeting for Morehead Center Avenue, which is?
June Twenty-seventh.
Yes, June Twenty-seventh, from five to seven P.M. Brian, do you have something you'd like to share with us today?
Well, thank you, Mr. Chair. Boy, you've covered, all of you have covered many of the meetings that I attended. Although, and in addition to that, I took three days vacation last week, so I want to thank you for that. It allowed me the opportunity to go down to North Carolina and attend my grandson's high school graduation. So that was nice. I'll just, it, it is the eleventh. You were right, Mr. Chair. July eleventh is when the architects and the construction managers at, at risk are going to then present to the full board. We're allowing about forty-five minutes, I think we talked about.
If we can, if I can too. I, I, we also asked then Julie to also give a report on the.
Transition.
Transition piece of that.
After that, yeah.
Okay, so they'll, they'll be there at the board to give an update on that as well.
So we should get a full, about a full hour of hopefully updates on that. And we've tried to keep you guys as, as informed as we can on it. Yeah, everything is, is, is going along, I think, as well as can be expected. Are there a couple of hiccups here and there? But jeepers, when you've got as much dirt and things being moved around here, you've seen a lot of progress as well, and, and those are really positive things. The parking lot in front is, is a separate project, as is the Northwest Parking Lot. And you have, you've noticed a lot of dirt that's being moved in there. That was not bid with. That was not bid with that much dirt being moved, and it's, it's, it's kind of changing rapidly. I talked with them yesterday morning, and they said that they were looking at taking out an extra foot or two of dirt, and I think now they're down into the three and four feet range. So it's going to cost us more money to do so. Highway is looking at the full project to see if there's some other things that can be traded off, but we'll, we'll get you a figure as soon as we can on that, but it's progressing forward. You'll notice some old, if you've come at the right time, you'll notice some old bricks out there. They're actually digging up where the former courthouse stood, the original courthouse. I think it was the original courthouse, so there's some old bricks that are being dug up as well. What I've been told is why they ever built a parking lot with the subsoil that they left underneath there. It, they said it's just, it's organic material, and of course, you know what, organic material, it can swell, it can shrink. And both Highway and Tom from Keys Construction said they wouldn't put a parking lot on top of that material, nor does it pass the tests, and, but they're getting down to solid ground that they will then haul, fill in, and pack it, and-
Brian, I got a question on that. I, on the, back in the May 23rd, or May 23rd meeting, there was, there was, there was some approval to do some soil borings for the parking lot. Now, was, was that for the Northwest Parking Lot? Because I'm just wondering then, if we would have had soil borings, why wouldn't we have found this out earlier? If we paid to have soil borings done-
Yeah.
Why, why wouldn't we have better answers than what we had?
Yeah.
Or, or am I, are we dealing with a different parking lot?
I, I, I can't answer that because I, I want to be certain, so let me check into that.
Okay, if you would, I-
Because, yeah, I can't believe, no, I'm quite certainly, we didn't have soil borings because of the fact that, that they would have drilled through the concrete and, or through the asphalt, and I don't recall them doing that out there, so, but just let me check on that.
Well, I know we authorized some soil boring, so it must be for that lot over there then.
For that lot over there, yeah.
Look on the May 23rd.
Yep, okay.
Okay, Brian, you don't have to do it right now, you can.
Uh, okay, um, so, like I said, I'll, I'll try to keep you as informed as I possibly can on that. Like I said, there was a different, different read on it at, say, 9:00 in the morning when I went out and, and made some rounds and visited with them. And then at about 5:00, when I talked to them yesterday afternoon, that was, it was a different story. They had to take out quite a bit more, so. And then I talked to Eric this morning on it, so. The buffer zone, I've had some communications in the last couple of days in regards to that, so I'm glad you guys had a good discussion on that today. I just wanted to, Felton Prairie, that's already been touched on, and attended that this afternoon as well. And then just a reminder that AMC, the District Four meeting is Friday af, Friday morning in Fergus Falls again, so if, well.
Is that, do, do you have the start time on that, is that?
I think it's like 8:15. Mm-hmm, yeah, I do have an agenda laying on my, on my desk.
It says 8:00 AM.
Does it say 8?
I had 8 written down.
Okay, yeah, usually it's 8 registration, and then they start the meeting about 8:15, so, yeah, I guess I-
Are you planning on attending that?
I was planning on it, yeah.
Okay, so will you give the county update then?
Sure, sure.
I just want to make sure that we know, has somebody's planning on giving-
Somebody's planning on attending, yeah.
I mean, I think most of us are planning on being there.
Oh, you are, okay, good, okay. Well, very good. I think, oh, there, yeah, I was going to say, I brought in the sheets, but I sent those out, the, the future schedules of both projects here and what's happening. They're going to complete those rammed aggregate peers within this week. That, that's really, really good. I mean, that was, by the time they get done, they'll have over 500 of them in. And as you can see, they're laying up, pouring a lot of foundations on both sites, and they're just doing an awful lot of work, so.
I think we're going to start seeing walls going up in July and-
Yeah, you are.
On the jail out.
Yeah, yeah, they're putting underground plumbing and wiring and things right now, so, okay.
Very good, thank you. Anything else, Frank?
That July 11th week where you got that meeting, that's the week, I think, I've got my vacation planned, so.
Oh, okay.
No, no, I'm, I'm just, won't be here that week.
Well, um-
Not that you have to change anything.
Okay, you'll, you'll be able to at least review the presentation if you want.
I'll watch it.
Yeah, very good.
I just want to comment, I had some 4-Hers reach out to us, since we, the County Board really does sponsor the Clay County Fair and helps out, that July 6th, they're having a fair cleanup night, and invited us to take part if you so choose.
July 6th?
In the evening.
That's the evening of the Thursday that we have our morning meeting that day.
That's our board meetings afternoon, I think.
You said it's around 9:00 AM?
9:00 AM, 9:00 AM.
That evening, yes.
All right, I'll put that down. Anything else, clean? All right, you will be adjourned.